10-3 Planning Board Meeting on February 14th has been called to order. Previous meetings minutes have been read and approved. The Treasurer's Report has been given. Any questions so far? And Planning Board.
So. I forget the extent to what I went into. Last. Forget the extent to which I went into in last Planning Report. But the MBTA Communities Interim Compliance Action Plan was submitted. You all reviewed what was what was proposed for that. So that has been accepted, not necessarily approved by the state. I don't anticipate getting if they have any issues. They did. I did reach out to them just to say, hey, if you have any issues, let me know. And what are the next steps? That sort of thing. And they reached out to say that, yes, we've received it. If we have any issues or questions, we'll be certain to reach, reach out to you for clarification. So that is all set for the time being. The next step with that is to, I was, I was considering looking into DLTA through CMRPC for assistance regarding, you know, the steps we may begin to take regarding that process. So I want obviously the planning board to be informed and involved in every step of that process. So that's what I'm thinking about currently with that. Housing Choice Designation. This came available at the end of January. Upton is, in my view, available to become a housing choice community because the, what you need in order to be designated for housing choice is a 5% increase in housing stock since 2018. And just by happenstance, you know, we've approved enough building permits within the last four years to be eligible for that 5% increase. And with that is, it just makes the town eligible for certain funding. So that's all that is. It's not, it's not a grant program necessarily, but it, it, it's a grant program in the sense that it allows us to apply for certain grants. And I'll be looking more into that the further I get along.
So it's less, it's less extortion than the other one?
I'd say so.
Is it tied to us remaining in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act though?
What's, what's that?
I said, is it tied to us remaining in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act? Since it is state funding ultimately?
It's sort of the same thing. So MBTA Communities, so because we will receive interim compliance for the MBTA Communities, that is what allows us to proceed with the housing choice designation. And so that will last until 2025, which is the deadline for compliance with that law. So long as they don't, you know, require other interim compliance actions in the meantime. And I haven't heard that they will, but I don't know if that's the case as of yet. So sort of, yeah, it's, it's working together, but it doesn't, the other doesn't preclude us from the other right now. I'll get to the zoning amendments further down in the agenda. We held the tip meeting for the improvements on 140. A lot of the interest in that or the complaints, I'll say, were relative to parking on 140. Obviously, in the interest of the businesses on 140, they are rightfully concerned about the impacts to their business even during construction as well as after construction. So myself, the town manager, we are hyper aware of that issue. And I know Joe is, is advocating on the town's behalf to, to see what we can get out of DOT going forward with that issue.
Now, does it designation of village center make that easier? Changing the speed limit, adding parking on both sides?
I'll say no, only because that designation doesn't, it doesn't impact the state road designation, right? So the state.
There is, sorry to interrupt, but there is a town in Massachusetts. It's in, maybe it's Route 9 somewhere.
Okay.
Where they have taken the state road and they have allowed exceptions for the town to have its center. And we're asking for the same thing. I think it's already been done.
Yeah, so we're pursuing that, yeah. So, but I guess as it relates to a form.
Maybe, I'm not sure.
Right, but as it relates to like a formal designation of the town center in any sort of official capacity, I don't think that has any bearing. But it has bearing, obviously, in the considerations as far as practical sense. So I know Joe has familiarity with, with discussing those issues with DOT specifically as it relates to these sorts of projects. So I sort of lean on him as to how to navigate those waters. But yeah, so, so yes and no, sort of the answer to your question. And we'll, we'll see what we can, we can get from that. Really, the, the issue with that is currently there's a proposed five foot bike lane on either side. And that is what is going to create the issue with parking, obviously. So as soon as you introduce, introduce those bike lanes, it's going to, you know, people driving and looking to park, they're going, once you see those bike lanes designated, as a driver, you're going to say to yourself, oh, should I be parking here? And it's going to deter people from parking. So we're, we're aware of that situation and we're trying to navigate around that as best we can to maintain parking for the businesses. What else? Oh, March 6th. Grace Brownell will be joining us upstairs.
G R A C E?
Yep, yep. And, and so she, she will be the department specialist, joining us in the first week of March. So excited to be bringing her along. She is a planning student currently. So she's very much interested in the position and.
Budget she is paid for?
It's a, I believe it's, it's part, it's part of planning boards as well as town managers and.
Sorry, because I haven't discussed anybody with her hours and if she's coming on board. Now, Paul, was that something you were involved in before?
No, I was involved in the, the last round of interviews for Michael's position. So that was it. I made a good choice.
What should we, questions to the board? What should we, we've got an employee coming in that's going to take our money and do our bidding. Do we want to meet her? Do we want to give her her, you know, what we expect out of her, what her role is going to be? I mean, we should invite her into the meeting. She shouldn't be doing anything for us until she's met the board and we tell her what we need her to do, right? Comments?
Well, I think she's probably hearing a lot of what we need her to do from the job description that we all saw a year, six months ago, whenever that, whenever the job descriptions circulated.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it. Tommy, if you want to be on the interview team, but I, I think we're, we're a small part of it, so.
My only thing is.
She's already, she's been, it sounds like she's been offered a job to start on March 6th.
Yep, already been hired. So we're going to get, get what we get here. And my, my thing is those 10 or 15 hours, I'd like to have her doing what it is we need her to do rather than what the town manager or someone else would like her to do. Because she has other hours for those jobs. So the hours that are just for us, we should decide as a board, what are, what are our priorities? You know, number one, she's going to help Mike with whatever he needs in supporting us. But what is it we need that, like Denise used to do, that, that we'd rather have Mike working on something else that we'd rather have her doing? We had time, we can think about it.
If I could suggest, I was going to have her sort of jump in on the minutes.
Perfect.
And help with that. She will, I mean, she'll, she'll be helping out immediate with all the administration, you know, agendas, minutes, just maintaining. If we're, if we start receiving, obviously, a lot of applications for some reason. But even the small amount of applications, she'll be in on the administration of that, receiving the applications. And I've already started developing. I know you already had a, a log.
Spreadsheet.
A spreadsheet of, of all the ongoing applications. I've taken that spreadsheet and worked it into a sort of a master log for the entire department upstairs. Well, just because as, as, as the department head up there, it includes, obviously, lots of boards and commissions.
Because if we have to, we'll put a blood pressure thing on it and anything that's spike and we'll have her do that.
Sure, yeah, that's, I think that'll work. I have one I bought from CVS, so.
All right, what else you got, Pauls?
That is, that is it?
All right, I'd like to.
Question, how do you spell her name? G R A C E L L? No.
Grace Brownell.
Grace.
Okay.
Grace Brownell, and that's with two L's. B R O W N E L L.
B R O W N E L L, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and I have a question. You said something about minutes. What would she be doing on minutes?
I was, I was going to suggest she can help the board out with minutes. She can attend, or I would encourage her to attend meetings, obviously, at least initially to become familiar with the board. So she'd be working off with Conservation Commission as well to attend the, the, the board meetings and to, you know, be, be, be in the room to observe so that she can take the minutes.
And again, that's something that probably, no. I mean, my, my as chairman, I would say we have a clerk that's going to be, that takes the minutes.
Oh, sure.
It's not, it's not, it's something, it's the only thing we're going to get sued over, right? It's the only thing that's going to be used in a, and if anybody appeals any decision that you.
But Tommy, we would still be voting to approve the minutes that she took. I mean, you know.
I don't want, well, I don't like taking, taking a member of the planning board out of, out of the process of clerking the meeting or, or, because what the one thing the clerk does is stop the meeting, stop the chairman to understand and explain what's, what's being written down. You get a lot less of that if it's a member. But I'll yield to the majority, whether, whether we want to the, you know, farm out the clerk duties to, to somebody else other than a member.
Just my two cents worth. I am the clerk currently, and I hate every moment of taking minutes. But that said, I would not want to relinquish it to a paid staffer. Mainly because I think of what Tommy said about, you know, it's, it's the one thing that's going to get us sued. And I know we can review the minutes, but I think it's the attention to the things that will get us sued. And as a reluctant clerk, I find, I found that I learn a lot in taking these minutes about process, about wording. I really appreciate, you know, Paul, I think this is the first time he hasn't fixed at least punctuation on the minutes, but.
Happy Valentine's Day, Kathy.
What?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. You know, but he and Gary, it's, it's sort of like an education process. And so I think it's valuable to the, to the person who's serving as clerk. But I also think, I do know that you guys will probably know when there were contentious things being discussed, the minutes grew to three pages.
Another piece, I guess, on the flip side, the one thing I will say is that whenever I'm in a meeting where I'm charged with taking the minutes, I feel like I actually can engage less with the topic because I'm so busy writing down what everybody else is saying that I'm not actually engaging with the, with the subject of the meeting as much. So it is, there are, there are pros and cons, I think, to doing this.
And why don't, then why don't we go with, we'll meet her, we'll go over it and, and we'll make the decision over time whether or not that's something we want to transfer over.
Okay.
It could be a slow process as well. So I mean, she, she still needs to come on board and get familiar with everything. And that's why I was suggesting I would have her, because Concom's going to have her immediately do minutes. But with my suggestion in, in discussing that with Mary is she should attend those meetings in real time when they're happening in order to be sort of baptism by fire, really just get thrown into it, force you to pay attention, to understand and get familiar with all of the topics that are being discussed.
But there's a difference between the elected board and appointed board.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And I think, and we've always used the clerk's position to learn planning board what, you know, having to write it down and like Margaret said, trying to pay attention and write it down at the same time is an extra learning curve for, for the clerk.
Yeah.
But after you're clerk for a year and it's, it's great to go into treasurer, isn't it, Margaret? All right, and I do want to move on to East Street Estates. We have to suspend our regularly scheduled hearing and reopen the East Street Estates Public hearing. They have requested a continuation until March 28th, 2023.
What's the, what's this? Oh, is that the shot clock or the hearing?
I believe we changed the shot clock last week. That was in the minutes.
Yeah, but I thought we changed it to the end of February.
Yeah, so we've, we've got a letter from Andrew Survey asking if we would extend the shot clock to March 28th, 2023. And I believe in the email, I'll see if I can find it.
The hearing to the 14th, I thought was what I said.
What, was, was it that or was it the, our next meeting this month, Margaret?
Oh, maybe it was this month.
Let me see if I can find it.
As far as I know, they're both being continued to the 28th.
But not the meeting, I don't think, Tommy. I think it was the shot clock to the 28th. And the meeting was something else. East Street. Let's see, I got it. If we can be placed on the Tuesday 2/28 agenda. So they want to be on the February 28th agenda. And I think the shot clock is to March 28th, if I'm.
Correct, March 28th. So I would move that we continue the public hearing to February 28th at 7:00. Tommy, you got a time, is that our first thing that we know?
7:05, it's fine.
7:05 PM. I'll, I'll do them.
Second half.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? In favor of, say aye. Go right ahead. Paul? Margaret?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And I will make that unanimous. And I'm going.
I would move that we, that we accept the request of the applicant to extend the decision time, the so-called shot clock to March 28th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? No discussion, all those in favor, same order, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Kathy? And I will make that a majority vote. Three to zero. Kathy, you offset one of iron eight?
Yeah, I, for some reason, it just went out. I, I vote aye, so that would be four to zero.
Four to zero. Okay, I'm going to reopen the regularly scheduled meeting and then suspend it again to reopen Governor's Landing subdivision or special committee. And they have requested a continuance until March 14th. Is there a motion?
It's March 14th. So I move, I move we reopen, we, we suspend Governor's Landing until March 14th at 7:05?
7:10.
7:10?
7:710, any discussion on the motion? All right, so none, all in favor of moving the continuing the Governor's Landing request to March 14th at 7:10, sign of five is saying aye, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And I will make that unanimous. So we're going to reopen the regularly scheduled meeting.
Where are we on the shot clock with Governor's Landing?
I don't, I don't think we have one on that, do we?
Well, they haven't actually, no. But we're in a public hearing already.
Well, that's a long one, though. That's a complicated process. So, well, Mike, Mike maybe will give us an answer on that one.
I'll look at that.
All right, now, the next is the, for I have buyers of zoning articles submitted to the town meeting warrant. Is that something you could fill in, sir?
Yes, so you, I, I believe the email went out to all the planning board from the town manager's office with the attached zoning articles on the warrant. So with that, you see, there was a citizens petition for 5G. And obviously, that's relative to discussion for tonight. And then the other one was something that I had brought up before, which was the request of the zoning board to increase to five members. So that, that requires a zoning bylaw change in our, in our local bylaw to increase that membership. So that's pretty simple change if, if it's going to happen. And so, so that's what you're looking at. We need to schedule public hearings for those two zoning amendments. So when, I was going to ask the board when you would like to hear those hearings, obviously, prior to the, the town meeting.
The arguments for are, get over with, but we'll have more information if we wait a little longer. So as far as, do we want to do them the same night?
I think so.
First, first meeting in April, it will be, first meeting in April will be enough? Soon enough or far enough?
That's what I was thinking, April 11th. That way, if we need to do something, you know, we could kick, we could still have a meeting on April. We could do an 11th, and if we had to continue it, we'd still have time before the annual.
All right, April 11th, we will shoot for that, April 11th, okay? That will be the, the two. All right, Community Center, I'd ask for the Community Center to be put on. We haven't had an update in a while. If we're going to get a as-built plan for that, it should be going through the town boards or in review process. Want to make sure we're all set for that to be opening in April, I believe.
Yeah, so there's no as-built as of yet. That will be coming. I'm not sure exactly when, but obviously, hopefully, prior to when, when they open. So, yeah, Tom did give me a, a couple of questions to look up on that. So I'll just kind of recite from the answers that I received. So no as-built plan has been prepared as of yet. ADA accommodations outside the building are not completed as they are waiting for a final coat of pavement. The playground is still a work in progress, but I think it's, it's, you know, you can see it there. It's, I think it's mostly complete. I know they had to ask people to not use it because it is so. So, but obviously, the rest of the project is, is, is ongoing. So they don't want, for obvious reasons, people to be using the playground. The conservation order of commissions, order of conditions will not be met until the project is completed. The Concom's order also will need to be amended since there was mitigation that was on the other side of Center Brook that will be, need to be pulled out of the Community Center project and get incorporated into the Grove Street Bridge project. And then, oh, there's a question as to the sewer and the connection to the sewer line regarding the issues that Town Hall is having. The Town Hall sewer issues are not a mainline issue, so it will not impact that project. Those, the issues we're seeing here are specific to, to Town Hall. So that's not a mainline issue.
These are all the questions that I've been asked over the past few weeks from either neighbors across the street, wondering what's going on. Because there was the sewer issue that impacted the businesses on the east side of the, of the 140. So I was curious as to what was the impact on, they were asking about the, is it going to hold up the Community Center? And it's, it's, it's good that it's only holding up the Town Hall. When is Town Hall?
I don't know yet. A Town Hall is technically open. It's just that for board meetings, we're encouraging people to participate remotely as much as possible just to put less strain on the, on the sewer and avoid potential, you know, backups and things like that. So while we have the option to, to participate remotely, we're encouraging folks to do so. But Town Hall is still technically open.
Can I ask a question, Tommy? You said people across the street were also having sewer problems?
Well, the, the, the Fin and Feather and the pizza shop and they all were asking questions because they all had sewer problems. And they were asking me if, if, what the problem was. And so my question was, is it going to affect across the street? Is it going to affect the opening of the Community Center? So that's why I said, is it a, is it a system-wide problem or is it just the Town Hall that's having the sewer problems?
Well, if they're reporting problems too, I'll, I'll ask about that.
They're fixed, that's, yeah, they went away two days ago. So they're all set. So that's why I was wondering, is the Town Hall not all set?
So. We're not currently having an issue. You know what I mean? It's, it's, it's just that the issue keeps coming back up.
Neither am I, so we're okay.
Sure.
And, and it's the other thing was, the Community Center, the, I had some questions on like the lot. I think Laurie's on the phone, on the horn here. People are looking forward to getting the library open and a lot of things. So that's, so my questions were on that. Is it, does the sewer affect the opening of the Community Center at all? And it appears that it's good news and it isn't. The other things I have is I have, we have a DGT Associates bill, if you would authorize me to write a voucher. There is a $472 fee that was for conservation. It's to attend this new meeting. And it's also, but a stormwater runoff peak flow and volume comparison, which we also asked the engineer for. We both asked for the same information. So my question to the board is, does the planning board want to take the $472.50 out of our budget? Or do we send it over to Conservation to be paid? Comments? Kathy, what do you think?
It sounds like a Concom issue, but if we both ask for it, what's the feasibility of splitting it down the middle, take the Solomon approach?
Well, the information is used by, by Concom for, for wetlands protection and it's used by the planning board for basement and driveway protection. So it's the same, same runoff numbers, it's just used by two different boards. So my question was.
Why not split? 235, 235. Why do we both, why do we both chip in?
What do you think, Paul?
I think that's fine for me as long as somebody's willing to do two sets of paperwork. It's not that big of a deal.
The paperwork shouldn't be an issue. But, yeah, my question was just how do you typically handle these things as the board?
Usually, we don't see Zoom calls on a bill from an engineer.
Right.
Margaret, what do you think?
I'm, I'm fine with splitting it. I mean, we both use the data, so.
Zoom calls should be on there.
And, but the engineer, yeah, that's about the split, right? All right, split, okay. All right, and the other thing is they want to renew their services. Is there a vote to renew DGT for another year?
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
Second. All right, any discussion on the motion? And what we'll do is we'll have Mike run it or get with the engineer and just get the contract to us.
Yep.
Then we get the contract and we can vote on it. Actually, we'll vote on it now. It's been, it's been moved and seconded to renew DGT Associates for 2023. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
I'll make that unanimous. So that's their professional services for another year. And the most recent bill, we're going to split the first, first part of the bill.
Oh, that was, I'm sorry, that was from Stantec.
Stan, I'm just, excuse me, Stantec is the, are we knowing Stantec is the engineer and DGT is the bill?
Yeah.
All right, so just Stantec, change that to Stantec, Kathy, if you would.
I think it was Margaret that made the motion. Oh, I just changed it, but don't you have to revise the motion?
Yeah, we have friendly amendment. Yeah, we have friendly amendment, that's our other engineer.
I just changed.
Okay. Now, the exciting part of it, Laurie. You'd like to discuss amending the wireless bylaw. We have you on the planning board agenda for a public hearing on the April eleventh. We have your letter on, why don't you take it away and explain what you've been doing since the last time we talked to you?
You're on mute, Laurie.
Mike put me on the agenda because he thought we had more to discuss, and I do want to say that I, some of my concerns about not amending the bylaw come particularly because the poles that they would be putting the cell towers on are in the rights of way, it puts them close to houses, and that's my big concern and, and the health impacts that that has. So I'm just afraid that not having a definition for small cells in our bylaw might make telecom companies feel that they don't even have to apply for permits if they wanted to install new technology in town. So that's one part. But when you folks decided not to go forward with it, I thought, well, we should do something and just sort of educate people about the issue and kind of get the word out a little bit, and that's where the citizen's petition came in. And the citizen's petition, what is an attempt just to slow things down, to take a look at it and to let people know that the FCC was sued and found lacking and that they were mandated by the DC courts to study the science and look at the testimony, which they still haven't done. And their reasoning is that they don't have the resources for it, but in the meantime, everybody's health is affected. So I put this together, I got an email from our town manager saying that because of the way it was written up, there are things about it that are fatal. And I met with him and with our town planner, and they explained that one of the reasons it was fatal is because of where I had inserted it into the bylaw. Is that right, Mike?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes and no, the, the, the real error, I'll say, is, is just that the petition doesn't include, explit, the, the word-by-word sort of explicit language that will need to go into the existing bylaw to, to be voted on at town meeting, to be then immediately adopted and incorporated into the bylaw. So the, as presented, this couldn't, you know, even if this were to pass town meeting, there's no way to incorporate this into the existing bylaw in any, any real way. So it's, so the, the conversation was obviously to express that concern to Laurie, but also to express to her that if she, if she wishes to pursue this still, is, is she will, will have to get sort of the, the planning board's buy-in of this article and to get you to sort of co-sponsor it to change the language within the confines of what's been presented here and to offer that, I guess, friendly amendment to this article so that the language can be changed in a way that, that would fit into the bylaw and if it were to pass town meeting. So obviously, that's something the planning board would have to decide to do, or you to do it.
Um, comments from the board? Hold on a second, Laurie, is that something we wish, I have no problem with doing that at all?
Well, actually, Tommy, I, I do have a question, I'm, I'm confused. From what Laurie just said about the citizen's petition, it basically raises that the FCC has been successfully sued. And it has been charged with looking at the health impacts of the small cell technology. And so my question would be, what is it? You know, to address what Mike just said, what is it that we're talking about going in, that's sort of like a, it's like a statement of, I don't want to say philosophy, because philosophy is too loose, but that's sort of like a, it's, it's a statement. It's not a bylaw change, so what could we change that to?
There's a definition that's in this as well, in the citizen's petition, is it that that definition was something that you wanted inserted into the bylaw, Laurie, was that the plan?
I really don't know exactly how it goes into the bylaw.
I would suggest to Carol through the chair that, I mean, that would be a way to, to pursue this, you know what I mean, that's, that's, that's a change you could make to the format that, that could fit into the bylaw, given what you've been presented, that's, that is an option.
Maybe some part of the definition could go into the part of our bylaws where we have definitions, because we have several definitions that are related to this type of technology already.
One of the things we did, for instance, for frontage, there's several places where frontage was mentioned, we changed it in the definition and then referred to the definition in all the other, other parts. We could also put whatever issue you're looking for in the definitions and then refer to it in the text of the, in the actual part of the cell tower.
Do we already have? Do we already have a definition of wireless telecommunications facilities in our?
Well, this would be a different, if this would be a different definition on this technology, it would be, it wouldn't be on our previous cell tower, it would be a separate definition of 5G.
I know, but if you have a definition of wireless telecommunications facilities in our cell, in our, then we could just add this to that definition, because this is a definition.
I, I, that's the easiest way to do it, I would agree.
I can't, I'm, I'm looking right now.
I don't think we have those exact words.
Well, that's what, again, we have, we've scheduled the public hearing for April eleventh, we, we have until then to get the language worked out, where it's gonna be put and how it's gonna be worded.
Is that something we can work on outside of a meeting? Can we make a little subgroup or anything like that to work on it?
Whatever you want. If you want to, if you, I, I will help you, and I will, I will help you if I can. And any other, we can't have three members, but you can, anybody else want to help out, sure, it could be a phone call, you could do a Zoom, you could have a meeting, whatever you like.
I think she'd probably be better served by having someone that has a, actually, I, I have a question, but I think that if they're coming up with language, the exact language that's needed from the telecommunications committee, or, you know, I'm not sure if the planning board, I mean, I think that, yes, we have to have the hearing and we need to be a part of this, but to come up with language, you know, I mean, I'm not, I don't pretend to be a telecommunications expert, and I'd be hard-pressed to assist with that. But the other question I have is, is before we even get into that, is that, you know, at the last meeting, and I don't think this has to do with changing the definition, because putting a definition is putting a definition in that you can refer to later with other bylaw changes. So that's something that, but I, I do recall that several members had, you know, concerns about adopting a bylaw, you know, governing the location of, of this technology mainly because of, you know, the expense of litigating it and pretty much the guarantee that it would be litigated and the success rate of communities that have litigated it. So, you know, Tommy was, you know, fairly optimistic that the planning board would support this, and I don't necessarily share that optimism based on the, you know, the conversations at the last meeting. That said, I don't see, really depending on what the definition is, I don't think there'd be the same resistance to adding a definition so that when we do refer to it later, if it is referred to later, that there's something that we're referring to. It's a starting point.
Yes, Kathy, I actually separate my optimism for success at the town meeting and my optimism of having the planning board support it. I know we've been accused of being working for the UN before, Margaret, I think, Margaret, you were accused of being on the UN on one.
No, I think it was all of us, Tommy, I think it was all of us.
But it's, it's worth, it's worthwhile, and I support any citizen's petition, it's, this, it's for the safety and health of the, of the citizens.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, okay, so we're thinking about having some sort of definition inserted, and then we may be able to work with the text of the bylaw to get it where it belongs or the way it belongs on April eleventh, if I understand.
It sounds like, it sounds like a two-step process, yes, it does sound like it's, can be done in one.
Okay, and I do want to remind you, I hope you got the email to know that we do think it's gonna need to be amended, because we do know there are parts in town where some updates do need to be made, especially on North Street.
A, a side question is, we have fiber optics, I believe, throughout the town. Is there any, any update on, is that, is there going to be a carrier that's gonna provide fiber optics for the town, or is that still, nobody wants to deal with us?
I had an informal conversation with our IT person who works for the town, who told me he was recently hooking fiber up to all the town buildings, so he's in the process of doing that. I wonder if he would know where fiber already is in town and how we would go about getting a provider.
Like to know, it'd be nice, I know it's not, I know 5G is for, for cars driving on the road, not so much, it's, you know, for businesses and for, for homeowners. But fiber optics would be used by everybody, and my cable bills.
And better, just a better connection, if we want to be a current, modern town that has best connection, like our towns, surrounding towns around us, I think we deserve it, just like they do.
I agree.
Question, in, in Ms. Woden's emails, she talked about amending the, the, the article, but the article's already been submitted, right? So there's, you don't have a lot of leeway to amend an article on town floor, it has to still be within the four corners, I thought. So is there still an opportunity to amend what's before the town and make it something that would work?
I believe so.
My understanding, go, go ahead, Laurie.
Well, just my understanding was with, was if it stayed within three hundred to six point two and the definitions, it would still be okay.
Through, through the chair, my understanding about the, the town meeting question, Paul, and as Joe explained this to me, is that for the citizen's petition and when it gets to town meeting floor, there are minor amendments that can be changed as far as, you know, grammar or verbiage. But substantive changes, I don't believe, can be made at that time, and that's why we're discussing sort of making those substantive changes in the, in the, in the the sense of making it work within how the bylaw is, is written currently. So I'm, I'm, I'm unsure if that answers your question directly or not.
Yeah, I guess it's, I, I don't know the answer either, so I'm, I guess it depends on whether the warrant article is already set in stone, or whether that's still flexible up until the day before the town meeting, and.
Oh, yeah, so again, my understanding is that the planning board, if the planning board decides to engage this, you can make changes to it that are within the intents of what is written here, right? But if you, if you don't decide to make any changes, then I don't believe it can change up until it, it gets to town, town meeting. That was, that was the conversation, Laurie, I believe we had with, with Joe when we discussed this.
And my memory is that the, there is a more relaxed amendment process for a citizen's petition than, than the typical town position, submission. And it's also prefaced by the planning board having a public hearing and formalizing the language at the planning boards. The, the planning board would be a co-sponsor at that time, and we would be offering the change, it has to still be in the spirit of the original, and we can't change and it's the hard fat, whatever there's a name for.
Yeah.
But there is a two-step process, planning board, and then you can do minor changes at the town floor, because it's a citizen's petition, minor.
I talked with town moderator about that, and that's what he said, same as you said, Paul, about the four corners of the amendment. But he said if it stays in there and it kept in the spirit of it, he thought we could make some changes, but I didn't, maybe I'll try and ask him specifically, because sometimes miscommunications happen.
And we'll need that information for the meeting, April meeting, because we don't want to exceed our, our opportunities there.
I think that would be a good idea.
Can I just ask a question too about the public hearing? We have the public hearing, and it is possible that the planning board decides it does not want to bring this to the town, I mean, does, it will, will not, I mean, does the planning board have to buy in if we have the hearing?
I, I think we get to recommend, so I think it's, I think we get to say, to recommend or not recommend.
Right, okay.
I don't think we get, unlike the, like, community preservation, I think that's the only one where you've got a pocket veto, but I don't think the planning board has a pocket veto, I think.
There is a fact that you being on, on the community preservation board, you always complain about.
All that happens, yeah, all that happens on, all that happens on the zoning change is the moderator is required to ask the planning board for its vote on the R. And, and whoever said, you can either give the vote or just explain it was, it approved, or you can say by the vote number, it was approved three to one, four to zero, four to one, wherever.
That's kind of what I thought, but when it was said that we would, you know, I, I just, I was confused about that. So, okay.
Any, any other questions for Laurie before we go? And Laurie, let me know, I can, I will help you any way I can, as far as from a planning board's perspective, I mean, I can't speak for the board, but I can help you research what you need.
Is the, is the public hearing at this forum, or is it in an auditorium?
Exactly like, exactly like this.
Okay, all right, just checking, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you very much.
So before we adjourn, are we heading for adjournment, because I do have a question. I was, it was strongly recommended, Mike, that we don't show up at meetings in person this month, but I see that a lot of people have shown up in person. Are we, is that a, a sort of a, I mean, does it matter?
If I may, Mike, I, I'm here because I can't run the meeting from home, I don't have the technology at home. Mike's here to run the meeting, and Bill's here because he's my Valentine.
Oh, but he's not wearing red, at least not visibly.
Yeah, Kathy, I'll, I'll, I'll more than likely always be in Town Hall doing meetings, just because it's impossible for me to be at home and not be interrupted completely when, when having me, and because I only live ten minutes away, it's, it's easier for me to be here, and I'm here all day anyway.
Sounds like children.
Yeah, but you won't have a little dog playing with a squeak toy. Took me a minute to realize.
I will have that too.
So everybody got a good Valentine's plan?
Yep.
All right, well, go do it then, reading adjourn, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.